I think everybody says.
Just add-ons, uh, I guess it came out after the.
We understand.
Ray said he was going around, so he probably should be this second.
Melissa.
What is this?
Ewan. It is. Okay. Oh, okay.
I just, I emailed them, uh, to him already today, and he got them.
I was not looking for none of them.
I'm not probably gonna ask him every question on there, he can answer back through the email, but some of them.
And he likes to tell them, and I usually remember, I mean, I have to miss. Hey, and, hey, Angela, we have to go together. And that's why I always, I always, I'm glad you did that.
Hey, April.
Good.
Do you have to have a clear purse to take into your place of work?
Oh, no. I used this on Saturday, and I haven't changed.
Yeah, I noticed, it's some of the more corp, the big corporate offices, you have to have a... That would really eliminate my snacks.
Okay, I'm gonna have to move, 'cause I keep kicking this table.
I recommended the move.
Oh, you did, good.
I think you do a great.
I'm good.
It's my positive encouragement.
You need to be the focus of this.
You are the focus.
Well.
We're recording.
You ready? Okay, so I call this meeting order at 5:33 on August the 19th, 2025. Let's all stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. You are a loving God, a just God, and I ask that you speak to our hearts as we make decisions for the betterment of the city and the best interests of the city, and to remain with us, even not in this closed prayer, but in always praying. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, I would like to welcome all of y'all here. First up tonight on the, um, public comments is Galen Turner. Galen, do you want to wait till we get to down to that in your, on the, um, agenda? Okay. Next up, we have, um, Rachel Guffey.
Hello, Council. My name's Rachel Guffey. I usually tend to stay out of things with the city, but, um, this is my family's home, and this is where my children's gonna grow up, so it's time I start taking part. I have been grown up here on and off. I've become a citizen of Jefferson fourteen years ago. Recently took over my parents' home, but, uh, when I took over, that addition of Alley Street had a lot of problems with feral animals. That's wild animals, and that is dump pets. It was so bad that my daughter got pinned at the front door by a feral cat, would not let her come out, tried to bite her. She was three years old. I had to literally take a broom and knock the cat off the porch. I hate touching an animal. I think that's wrong, especially one that's been dumped. It's not their fault. It's our place to help take care of those animals. We may not be the ones that dumped them, but we're the ones that's responsible for our community. It's our place. It's just how it is. Not long after that, she was pinned down in my yard by a wild dog. My husband had to take a stick and whack it because it wouldn't get away from her. My animals stay in pins, they're fed. I have two puppies that are escape convicts all the time, they won't stay in, on and off, but I do my best to take care of my animals. As a citizen, I love my town. I'm not proud of how it's being run lately. It's embarrassing at times. You know, my family's been coming here for seven generations. Mr. Fugler cuts five generations of my family's hair. I can't count the how many times I've been to Mardi Gras. And my daddy, as a baby, he always wanted to raise me in Jefferson, wanted a home in Jefferson. I was growed up by the time he got a home in Jefferson. He called families from three different states just so they could come see his house in Jefferson. That's how proud he was to be a member of this community. And they have had a lot of history with Jefferson. They're the ones that helped lay the train tracks for the train rides. They did the Wild West shows, the very first ones. They did the gun wild, the gunfights up in the alley by the general store. There's a lot of history for this town. But.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Blackburn.
That's hard, any time?
Yep.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, fellow citizens of Jefferson. My name is Chris Blackburn, I live at 210 East Henderson. Today, I stand before you to address a matter that is close to my heart and is in opposition of the city ordinance that bans the feeding and carrying of stray animals and wild animals. I urge you to reconsider this decision, as it touches on the very essence of compassion, humanity, and community. Feeding wild animals as strays is not just a simple act, it's a humane and Christian gesture. Mayor, please pay attention. That reflects on our values as individuals and as a community. It is an expression of kindness, a reflection of our Christian beliefs, and a testament to our responsibility towards the creatures we share with on our... My wife, Mary Ann, and I, along with the Grams, are currently feeding 22 stray cats, including the feeding, spraying, neutering, as well as actual annual checkups and vet bills. FOGA has offered invaluable assistance last year, spaying four of these animals, to help us with the cost. Of those 22 cats we are currently feeding, all but four have been spayed or neutered. The only reason the other four have not is because of the new mother with fresh kittens, and we haven't been able to catch her yet. Based on this ordinance, I won't be able to catch those without being in violation of that ordinance, because they're not always on our property. Throughout my career, I've had the privilege to work for several cities. Two in general started as small communities, just like this one, and became very large communities. When we went through things like this, we did this through the help of, and volunteering of citizens. And when you go to punish those citizens for doing that, I don't think that's what our goal here is. The population, or I, I love the city of Jefferson and its cities. We must ask ourselves if operating in compliance with the values and traditions we all hold dear in this community, let's not allow one well-intended but extremely misguided ordinance split our community and our pride. Together, let's continue to feed, care for, and protect our wild animals that share our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sharon Goolsbee.
Ms. Mayor, City Council, I'm Sharon Goolsbee, and I'm here to address 9C regarding the AOC. ACO, I'm sorry. Hiring an ACO is a process that should be thought out and worked on for a period of time to establish job descriptions, salary, equipment, and contracts, not just from today to October 1st. One ACO would be full-time at 40 hours a week, what happens when that person is off duty? As Jefferson has no facility, a contract would have to be worked out with another city. Whatever that contract the city has for the ACO to hand off to is going to lead to massive euthanasia of animals, as it did with Dixie. With FOGA out of the picture, who has always facilitated adoptions and transports, euthanasia only occurring when the animal was beyond medical help, which has been minimal in the last 6.5 years that we have been in operation. Our priority is giving animals the best chance of survival in good homes, whether lo, whether those homes are local or we can transport them out of state. As Chief Perez will affirm, in the 6.5 years that they have worked with FOGA, FOGA has never failed to help them with their issues and basically took over that animal issue for them. The four bait dogs that we were asked to pick up on Haywood four years ago in War II, we were able to pick up, get vet care, get into fosters, and adopted, which proves that even the badly treated can be saved most of the time with love and patience. The implementation of immediate ACO is going to be very expensive for the city police to undertake with their current budget and staff that is insufficient to handle the city as it is. We are asking you continue to fund FOGA's $16,384 and allow us to continue to work with Chief Perez and his officers as we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kimberly Parsons.
I have five points. Point one, some clarifying information about dog bites by Ward this year. Ward one has two bites, Ward two, three, Ward three, four bites, and there's one that's either Ward two or Ward three, but it's unclear. Point two, annual costs for animal control. I and many others have spoken with our neighbors at Marshall Shelter. A ballpark figure for salary training rabies preventative vaccine and equipment is $46,900. The city would also have to have a properly equipped truck, a holding facility, contract for veterinary services, and support for partner rescue for adoptable animals. I'm providing you with that information regarding salary and needed equipment, and in discussions with one of my aldermen, I understand most of that is not likely possible in this year's budget, but I'm giving it to you as a step in a process. Point three, let's talk about that process. I am thrilled that animal control is on the agenda. It's a step forward, but it's just a step in what has to be a well-thought-out process, a process that few, if any, of us in this room are qualified to undertake on our own. In Proverbs, it says, "Fools despise wisdom and instruction, and where there is no counsel of people fall, but in a multitude of counselors their safety." We told you before that there are numerous professionals in animal control and animal welfare law who are more than willing to volunteer their time to help. Form a committee, include all the stakeholders, to explore the options before the '26, '27 budget talks begin. I'm also providing you with information that I received from our shelter friends about how you can organize such a committee. Wise counselors can help us explore options that are in compliance with state law, options that make sense for the resources that we have available, options that don't penalize the helpers, and options that make Jefferson a safer, happier place. Which brings me to point four. In May, you agreed to form a committee to report at this meeting about the cats and the pigeons, and then a few of you, to my knowledge, have zero experience in animal control or rescue, came up with what you thought was a quick fix, and you rammed it through at the July meeting. It's based on a law that doesn't exist, and as written, it's unenforceable. So please, one of you, put that ordinance on the agenda for the September meeting. Discuss it publicly, give knowledgeable people the opportunity to advise you. And finally, my last point. Do what you can do this budget year. Fund that line item I keep asking about for $3,000 for dangerous dogs. Continue to fund FOGA so that we have some kind of animal control. I'm asking big. I'm asking that you increase FOGA's budget to 20,000 to help cover rising costs, and a rabies vaccine for at least one of our volunteers. Yeah, 23,000, it's a lot of money, but it's a lot less than 46.9 plus a facility and a truck and everything else. Buy time to explore options while we work with what we have, and most of all, welcome instruction, seek a multitude of counselors, and move forward in wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. First off, I want to start off by saying, Dina Carroll, I'm here regularly, but, um, it was suggested to me this week that some among us may think that I'm an attention seeker, and let me just say, there's plenty of other ways for me to seek attention that do not require a monthly Xanax prescription. There are other ways that I could seek attention, but am I attention seeker? You're darn right. There are things that I've smelled that, I would say you've probably smelled, death. There are things I've seen, congealed bodies that make grown men puke. There are things that I've heard, suffering, that I can't unhear. So when it comes to seeking attention for things like this, you're right, I am an attention seeker. I would say, ever since I laid my eyes on those 80 sick dogs and three freezers of dead ones, I've sought better options, alternatives, and choices, not only for the animals, but the people in the city of this county. And here we are, six and a half years later, and we've made tremendous strides in animal welfare partnerships with our local law officers, surrounding shelters, rescues, and even rescues across the north. However, we stand at a crossroads today. We can continue to pile things on the plates of the people that are staffed here locally, law enforcement, whether city or county, that are already stretched too thin and understaffed a lot of the times, or we can choose to explore other options. My sincere hope is that you choose the latter. Lastly, I find it to be no coincidence, since the passing of the ill-conceived ban on feeding, that we are now finding dead pigeons on the streets of Jefferson, including right across from two local eateries. That should be a health concern, since the ill-conceived ordinance was based out of health concerns in the beginning. I've spoken to someone at LSU and Texas A&amp;M, and those are my two options for avian necropsies, which for the layperson is an autopsy on an animal. I want to speak with the Texas Health and Wildlife people to see if they don't have any money in the budget for me sending off four of the birds that I retrieved and two of those that Kit retrieved, but if the city would like to chip in any money to find out why pigeons are dropping out of the sky, I would be happy to come get it. Because I've spoken to the third-in-command for Texas, and it is not, for the Texas Health Department of Human Resources, and it is not avian bird flu season, and if it were the heat, we would see other species coming out of the sky. So that ought to be a concern to people here in the city limits, as to why now and why just pigeons. So, I've invited, um, other people to speak, some people that haven't, and for those that have shown up, I appreciate them. Council, I appreciate your time, and I hope that you choose wisely.
Up next, we have Kay Brookshire.
So I'm Kay Brookshire, I live at 1204 South Main, and I've been a resident of Jefferson and Marion County for over 20 years. First of all, I want to say, I lost my internet when I came in, and I didn't print what I was gonna say, so I'm winging what I was gonna say, so you have to bear with me. But I do know that I was gonna, I am a friend, a friend of Jefferson Animals. I have volunteered twice for Woodstock. I appreciate them, I've had two rescued dogs, right now I have a rescued cat, and, um, and I appreciate all that they do for our city, and, and, and I hope that we can continue and come to something in a good and kind and common sense manner to satisfy all of us. I really do. But my concern is the pigeons. And God made pigeons to take care of themselves, and I don't care what you say, they are not, they are, are not, um, uh, what is the word I want? They're, they're not, uh, yeah, that kind of animal. Anyway, their droppings, their poop, or their guana is very dangerous. It's, we've had people already concerned and already complaining about it on their cars, Jefferson citizens as well as tourists. And it's not just that it falls on their cars, it, it continues as it dries to harbor bacteria. Even the feathers of birds that are infected harbor the bacteria. Now, i- if you allow pigeons in your city and you allow the feedings of pigeons, then you have to allow whatever, you have to be ready for whatever happens when somebody sues your city. And, and it's, there are humane and easy ways to get, to, um, have the pigeons go somewhere else. And, um, that, in my opinion, is what I would really like to see the city do, because it is a very nasty thing. Now, in Europe, they raise them to eat, and that's not a bad idea. Anyway, um, as far as the cats are concerned, I do hope that we come to a sensible and, uh, good decision with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have, is it Kate? Or Kath, or? Kirby? Kelly, Kelly Kirby?
Good evening. I have no speech today. I met each one of y'all last week. I don't really have a lot to say, other than I just moved here and I'm new, and each and every one of y'all, um, it means a lot, what everyone thinks. I want everyone to get along and us find a resolution for all of this. As you see, this is my lifeline. This one goes everywhere with me. I can't, I can't breathe without him. He goes everywhere. He means a lot to me. Animals mean a lot to me, too. But please, each one of y'all, find it in your heart to find some kind of resolution for this, to be not inhumane or not cruel. Please, I'm asking kindly. Thank you.
Thank you. And last up, we have Anne LeBlanc.
Look, very nice today, Patricia, and I apologize to you because I know you didn't come up with this on your own. It's other board members had a bad influence with you. Oh, so you did come up with it on your own. Oh, I got the answer I was looking for. When you defund the police, the cat funds, a dog fund, and all that, did y'all even find that $5 million? Did y'all? Didn't anybody check? Nobody checked. What we don't like about this town is the shenanigans that y'all do behind our back. That's why a lot of people are here tonight, because y'all vote behind our back. We didn't vote for a lot of these people that's on this board, but I did vote for Patricia because her husband's a good man. I figured as a good man, it's always behind a good woman, right? I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened. But here we are again. Even we had to do a fundraiser so our own police officers can have bullets. Even Mayberry, Barney Five, at least got one. Really? I know that the budget is with the bullets already been passed, thank you, but it's behind our back that we don't like. Y'all all go down to Brookshires, get gas and all that. You gotta see each and every one of us a lot. Represent the people for this town, don't represent yourself. When it's a hand in the cookie jar and $5 million's missing, somebody better answer some questions. I think this town deserved it. And I know you shaking your hair, uh, head, Patricia, but if I was the mayor of this town, I want to find out what happened to the money. And Nancy, that's why your husband left you.
Hey, hey.
Hey, she started it. Hey, she started it. Okay. I am addressing you. This whole town addressing each and every one of y'all on this board. We just want y'all to do right, because this is a rare town that we live in, very rare. A lot of people around the world want to live here, but when we get hit nationwide on TV a couple of weeks ago, that's embarrassing for this town. Don't we all agree on that one? Nationwide, my niece in Pennsylvania called me to tell me what was going on in my own little town in Pennsylvania. That's bad, nationwide. I just want y'all to do right for the people of this town, because we all in the same boat, we all live together, and don't go behind our back.
Time's up.
No, time's up for you.
Uh, next up, we have Diamond Don's Motorsports Fall Events, Francine.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and the City Council. Thank you for putting me on the agenda. I just wanted to review our, uh, fall events, because it does have impact on, uh, members of the council and also, uh, businesses in town. First off, I would like to say that, um, I'm very pleased that the Ride Texas Magazine, which you probably have seen or not seen, there's some in the lobby. Anyway, we have a great article in here on, um, that includes three events. The Diamond Don Race in September, the Burn Run in October, and Diamond in the Rough in November. So we're very, very pleased to get about three pages in the magazine highlighting Jefferson. And thank you to the Tourism Board for helping me arrange, uh, that ad in this publication. Um, I've handed out to everybody our promo material to let you know what we are doing. We have a, uh, tractor show on September 13th in downtown Jefferson. This tra, this, um, event is free to the spectators and free to the participants in the tractor show. It's on Saturday, September 13th, from 10 to 2:00, and we have these brochures available for anybody who wants them. Um, we have Diamond Don's Race. Now, I'm supposed to be retired, and I keep saying this to Don, I'm like, why am I working on events when I'm retired? Well, he just likes to work, so, so I'm the, the woman behind the man, I guess. Um, but we are having a motocross and cross-country race. Um, this is called a regional, which means it's really covers the south-central area of Texas, but we have had so many friends across the United States that have been to the, to Jefferson for the last 20 years, that we anticipate having about 500 people for that race. And we're doing, uh, RV sites, our first come, first served, so they're coming in very early, like on Tuesday before the race, so we'll have them here for about a week for all those people. And then in, uh, November, we're doing Diamond in the Rough. This is a dual-sport. This is a dual-sport, um, and adventure ride, which is for motorcycles that can go on public streets and also on dirt, and they call it dual-sport. These were covered in the Ride Texas Magazine. Uh, we expect to have two or three hundred riders here for that November event. Uh, we did just have a Texas Cross Country Racing Event in June, and we had about four hundred people in town for that as well. Um, we will have, and I'll let the chief know, we will have fireworks on the Diamond Don Race in September and the, um, dual-sport ride in November. We always have our fireworks very early in the evening. We have them at dusk, uh, but never any later than nine thirty. So we're in that portion of the RV park is in the county, so I don't really need approval, but I do like to tell everybody. And we do a special, uh, notice out to all of the people in town that have animals that might be afraid of fireworks. We keep a running, uh, tab on that to let them all know when we're, when we're doing that. So I just wanna say thank you to the city and to tourism for supporting our events, and, uh, we enjoy bringing a lot of people to town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Parsons.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Jamie Parsons here to report on behalf of, uh, JEDCO for our quarter ending June 2025. I believe you all have a copy of our report. Um, I'm just gonna hit some highlights. We, uh, approved, uh, a request to fund up to four hundred thousand dollars for the construction of a new fire station. Uh, we have our quarterly expenses and, uh, account totals, uh, on the report. Um, so I'm not gonna go over all of that, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Um, Jamie, uh, when you, you opened up two new accounts, uh, which account did that money come from?
We haven't opened those accounts and, but it will come out of the Vera, the Vera Bank.
Are they offering competitive interest rates to your Vera?
Better interest rates.
Good, good.
Anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Colleen Tay- Taylor with Tourism.
Um, good evening, Mayor, Councilmen, and Visitors. Um, I'm Colleen Taylor, and President of the Tourism Board. Um, we collect the hotel occupancy tax, which is referred to as the hot tax revenue for the city, and, uh, it is up eleven point ninety-eight percent over last year, which we're excited about. Um, events coming up, if you're interested to know what's going on in our town, you can, uh, find events on the tourism website and on the Chim Chamber website. And we ask that everybody, uh, promote these, especially our council people, uh, so that we can keep our city going. Uh, there is a reminder that the Tourism Board is working with the Chamber to bring the CPCK Holiday Train back this year. We don't have the exact date yet, but it is coming, and we are working to make that a, a nice event for the children. Um, the Tourism Board, uh, or Tourism Department, uh, discussed the changes that might be made to this tourism building. We would like to clarify that we are not against sharing the building with the city offices, as stated in the Gimplicue. We've just feel it would be easier to add on to the existing building instead of changing the main structure. This building is used so much, and we would hate for our city to lose it to use. That being said, we will do what is asked of us. Concerning Christmas, we will need help putting up the big tree and decorating it. Sharon Goolsbee has graciously offered her covered area on Polk Street where the red bus was to house the tree. She's also having a photo backdrop made, and this could be a fun community project to bring your children out and have their picture made, and for our visitors coming to our city. Gray Marketing is the marketing company we, uh, hired last year in, uh, to start this year off. They have seen, uh, our analytic numbers increase since their marketing strategies. And, uh, for those of you that are concerned, the KTA L commercial has finally been updated, thanks to Stephanie of Gray Marketing. She sent over from, uh, Tyler to the station in Shreveport, Channel Six, uh, their commercial so that we were not running the old commercial. Uh, the new quarterly magazine, which we just passed out, uh, is out, and the city map has been revised. We tried to revise it so that all new businesses are on it, all new B and Bs, everything like that. It has been revised and reprinted. We encourage anyone and everyone to please take them, the maps and the new magazines, uh, if you haven't gotten them, from, uh, out front, and put them in your bags, give them out to your visitors to help promote our city. Two new videos on our city were done in July. One was done by Gray for advertising, and one was done by Subaru of Tyler and featured a day in Jefferson. They picked us, they came over in their Subaru, and we showed them around. There were also two new magazine articles published about Jefferson. One, uh, that Francine talked about, and then, uh, there were two others, one in Texas Highways and another magazine. The tourism building is rented all the weekends through the end of the year. A balanced budget has been submitted for review, and I will be here tomorrow night to answer any questions. And if someone, whether it be the Board, the Mayor, or any of you, uh, please come to our meetings and do not complain on the streets. Let's address it and work together, and suggestions are always welcome. Do I have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I just saw something on Facebook over the weekend, um, about the building being very hot to the people that rented it over the weekend.
Uh, yes. Uh, two weeks ago, um, I was helping the museum with an event here, and, um, I had to come in the evening before, turn the air conditioning to seventy, came in that morning, turned it sixty-eight. By the end of the event, we were at seventy-eight degrees. So the, the building, uh, I asked Danielle to call about that, um, and then I asked her again to call, they've been here, two of the air conditioners are out. So it was extremely hot.
My question is on that, are we letting the people know that are renting the building, and are we offering them some of their money back? Just because being, if you pay seven hundred dollars to rent this building, and then you get in here and it's just, cause seventy or eighty degree, basically if it's seventy-eight with nobody in here, when there's a room full of people, it's almost ninety degrees.
Uh, I hadn't addressed that with Danielle, because I don't think that would be our decision. I think I would have to address it with Melissa. Um, it was extremely hot the weekend that I attended the event here. It was extremely hot the next week for a meeting, and then this past weekend. So that's not my decision, the tourism decision. That would have to come with, uh, talking to Melissa and seeing if we needed to give money back.
Only because I know that the people that had it this past weekend, I know that they've done the event repeatedly, you know, for a couple of years. And I saw where they said they weren't going to do it again, so maybe something that we reach out on, or just at least let people know.
I will talk to Danielle tomorrow about that. I do know that, um, I was involved in the one two weeks ago, and on Monday, I called about the air conditioners. I called about getting them on Thursday, I called about them last week, and we have had, um, them looked at, and now we need two new ones.
And we do have something coming up, but I just, I don't want people being nasty with y'all, and it's not, you know, y'all's fault, whatever.
Who did you call about it?
Um, Keith Air Conditioning was called.
Did you call them?
No, I didn't. I had Danielle call them. Um, but I called down here twice to her. I said, Danielle, we have to get the air conditioners, cause it was really unpleasant, and then we had another event, so it's going on three weeks that would, the air conditioners have not worked, or two of the five. So that's all I know is they've been called. Melissa?
During the Civil War Symposium, when it was hot, we, the air conditioning was weighted on to turn it on for it to actually cool down, and it was overheated. You know, it was hot in here that day. It was seventy-eight, seventy-eight degrees in here when the temperature, or the thermostat was turned down to what, seventy degrees?
I turned it down the night, uh, the, at, the day before, we turned it down while we were setting up, and then when I left, I turned it to seventy. I got here early that morning and turned it down to sixty-eight. It never got cooler than, you know.
And this large room takes a long time to cool down, so at that time, we didn't know it wasn't working. Um, we didn't know it wasn't working till the following week, when we tested it and started turning it down to see if, over that long period of time, if it would finally get down to that. Last week is when we called Keith Air Conditioning.
Okay.
Again, and had them come out, cause they had, they've been out here at least once or twice every month since we've been down here, because of issues we've had with these units, so.
I did call on that Monday and, and ask, or text Danielle, and I said, Danielle, when you come into the office, Keith Air Conditioning needs to come, the air conditioners are not working.
Yes, and so they, it's been, we've been looking at it. It's not something that just got left out. It's been worked on, and, uh, those customers did call me yesterday. I let them know, I don't have the paperwork for this building, and that when Danielle comes in tomorrow, her and I are gonna discuss it. And they were okay with that. They told me the same thing, that they rent this out every year, but it's not something that's gonna happen overnight, so we need to wait till Danielle gets in, look at the paperwork.
I just didn't want people yelling at y'all, cause I know this building is constantly rented out, so I know it's something that we just need to address and help you guys.
And the museum did not say anything. The museum put on the Civil War Symposium, they didn't say anything about asking for money back. I just explained to them that the air conditioners weren't working, and if, if they say anything, I'll be sure to have, pass them on to Melissa and Danielle, but they didn't say anything. I was hoping before the next weekend, we'd get the air conditioners fixed. It didn't happen, so I, I hate it.
They're not fixable.
Right, and I, I hate it, but we'll look at what we can do to help those people out.
Well, I just want people, I just would.
We don't wanna lose business over it.
Right, I just want us to, I hate for people to come down here, they're expecting the air conditioner, they're expecting all that, they've paid almost a thousand dollars to rent a building, you know, so I just want us to be upfront with people to let them know.
Thank you for that. Yes, I saw that. So, well, uh, Danielle will talk with Melissa tomorrow, but I think the museum, that they, they're, they didn't, they complained, but it wasn't that they asked for money back, so if they come up and ask for that after their next board meeting, I'll let you know. Okay, any other questions? And please, if you need magazines, take some, they're out here, take maps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have George with Northeast Texas Municipal Water District.
Mayor, City Council. Um, this is my quarterly report, and I distributed a copy to everybody, I think, there. Um, not a whole lot unusual going on. Uh, the reservoir is, uh, full right now. It's actually in the conserva- conservation pool right now. It's above where we own water. We own water up to two hundred and twenty-eight point five feet above sea level, and I think it's about another foot above that. When it gets that full, when it gets above our con- our, our level at two twenty-eight point five, the Corps has control of the water. And I asked them why we, why our river looks so dry all of a sudden. I mean, not all of a sudden, it's been dry for like a couple, three weeks or something like that. We had some rain and everything else, but that's a question that only the Corps asks, and you gotta ask them from Washington back to Fort Worth, back to here. But at any rate, long and short of it, is our river doesn't look very full, but the reservoir is completely full right now. Um, number two, we have two new directors on the board. We welcomed Laura Maybe from Dangerfield, and Dennis Hammond joined us from Lone Star. They're two new directors that just recently came on the board. Um, we had new mag meters put in by the district here, they just completed that not long ago. And a mag meter is how you tell how much water is being brought from our treatment plant down for sale to the city of Jefferson. And we had some, uh, not outdated meters recording how much water was coming into the city that the city would pay the district for. But they were, we now have brand-new mag meters out at the facility, on the outside of town, near the, near the towers, uh, and they are monitored from, uh, the tan- Tanner Plant. The engineers and the people that run the plant out there can see moment to moment, instantaneously, how much water is flowing into Jefferson. It helps also, excuse me, I apologize. Um, it's important to watch that flow, because if we see it jump, it means we've got a leak here in the city. And if we can see leaks in the city, it saves money for the city, because once it comes into the city, the city owns it, and they can follow things like that moment to moment, almost instantaneously. And that was a good, that was a good investment they made. That was fifty thousand dollars were on the new mag meters that they put in for us. So, and it will help us dramatically on watching our use of water, and reliable as a billing procedure, cause we can see it momentarily, we can see it at any point in time, so it makes it a lot easier. One interesting event that doesn't involve us, even though, though it does, is, because it's so close to us, the Crestwood Edition out at Lake of the Pines, that I know y'all are all familiar with, had their own water treatment plant out there that they operated from well water, not from a Tanner Plant water, not from district water. And they were recently acquired by another company, who, for some reason, during their new acquisition, those wells almost all ran into, uh, problems with, with the treatment of the water. The, it was bad water, and they wound up being shut down by TCEQ. As we sit here today, if you wanna drink a water in Crestwood, you have to have it delivered in bottles by Aqua Texas, who is the people now own their water treatment out there. So the district stepped in, uh, to help those people out there, and we're rerouting water out of MEMS, as it comes out of the Tanner Plant, comes down toward us. We're the next people on the line coming out of MEMS, and then it goes on down to Harlton from us. This is a supply line, fresh water that we drink. So they, they diverted a line from MEMS over to Crestwood temporarily, so that they can at least get them some flowing water, and we plugged into, we're plugging into their lines. I'm not positive where they are on that, I'm not sure it's been completed, and they'll have to pay for that water as it comes out of Tanner, but at least they'll have some water while Aqua Texas tries to figure out what they're gonna do about these polluted, I, I shouldn't say polluted, I don't know what the co- what the problem was, but whatever it was, it was not up to TCEQ standards, and they told them they couldn't distribute that water any further. Um, also, our water quality continues to be excellent. Uh, there's, that's about it. That's my report, are there any questions?
I have a question. Um, I, I sent you a, today, I sent you a list of questions that.
Got it right as I walked in.
I know you haven't had time to, to go over everything, but I, I do wanna ask you a couple of them. Uh, one thing I, I wanted to ask you is, when you do your quarterly reports, is it possible that we get a itemized, not necessarily that you have to read it, but can it be submitted, an itemized, uh, uh, list of expenses and profits and, you know, basically more than one number?
Uh, I, I don't know why that couldn't be done. I'm, again, I'm speaking for a seven-person board, so.
Sure, sure. And I know you're not going to have the answer to every one of the questions that you submitted.
I, I will get answers to those questions. I got those from you earlier, Paul. I appreciate it.
I asked for budget figures over a year ago. And then again, I asked again at another meeting, and I have yet to see it. So I wouldn't get my hopes up.
Well, one of the questions I have is, y'all have almost a million dollars in profit or income larger than expenses. Where does the excess revenue go?
Can't answer that. I didn't know we were going to be talking about the budget. I didn't even bring my budget with me. So it's in about four, five pages.
Okay.
I've got that on your list here, and I intend to send, get this answered for you, get it right back to you. And if other council people have questions on the budget, if you can get them to me, I'll get them answered. We have a meeting on Monday of the board. And I'll get those back to you probably within a week, okay? And if you can get them submitted to me, I'll be happy to take them up and find out all the answers to it.
Do you know, do you know what the Luminate Pitt Water Storage?
I know something about it. I hate to get into this because I was not prepared to answer questions about that. But Luminate closed their energy plant up there. They had the rights, and this is going to get way off in the weeds, but they had the rights to water. We have a contract with Luminate, uh, in which they pay us something close to three-quarters of a million dollars a year for, to pull raw water out of the lake and use it up there. They are obligated to continue that even though they closed. And they have continued that for some number of years. The reason being that we anticipate, or we think is, they went bankrupt, as you know. We are probably the only people out of that bankruptcy that are still being paid on any kind of obligation that I'm aware of. Now, I'm, I'm not their lawyer. I don't know all the ins and outs of that bankruptcy. But I do know this. They made their annual payments every year. And I suspect it's because they don't want to give up that water right, which they would do. It would revert back to the district if they say, we're not going to pay that anymore. So I think they see that as valuable right. And at any rate, in their infrastructure up there, they built a long, I, I almost call it a ditch, but it's a very long holding tank for things that they were putting in there, water coming through there and this and that and the other. And we bought that. They didn't, they had the problem that if they were getting ready to leave there, the federal government requires them to restore that land to the, as close as they can to what it looked like before they got there and started digging up coal, okay? Now, that ditch, in order to remediate that, would have cost them an incredible amount of money to close that ditch and fill it in, do this and that and the other. It holds a lot of water. So we proposed to them that they let us have that. And we bring it down through Tankersley Creek. And therein, back into the Lake of the Pines, so as a supply of water. And I think what you're looking at there.
Well, there was a hundred thousand dollars spent and given to them.
Yes, that's probably right. That, that's ver- that's, it's a good price. Uh, water is extraordinarily expensive to buy the right back on that. We got it. So that's what that is. That's a, they call it the pit. I, I have seen it. It looks to me like an elongated ditch about probably as wide as this room. And it was where they brought the water in. I don't know if they were using it to settle out some sediment or something like that. I don't know what they were using it for really. Wasn't any of my business. But, uh, long and short, it holds a lot of water. And we said, we'll take that because it's another water source for us. And it produces a lot of water. Produces way more than any hundred thousand dollars. Anything else?
Who, whose responsibility is it, uh, in your organization to go after state and federal grants for infrastructure, infrastructure funds? Who handles that?
General manager.
Question on, y'all had to pay the previous executive director, what, a hundred and forty thousand to buy him out?
Don't call. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
What fund, though, did that come out of?
I don't have, don't know. Don't know, but I'll check on it for you and find out, okay? I assume, well, you know, we run three funds. There's three separate, three separate tranches of money. And the one that has the operating expenses is where that came out of. It didn't come out of the part for sale of raw water that is split up equally amongst the cities. That's the first one. The second one, I believe, is the operating account. The third one, I think, is the infrastructure account where we do capital improvement. So I'm going to guess it's out of the operating account.
Well, was that a lump sum or y'all paid him out? Do you remember?
Lump.
So he's already pretty much got that, I guess.
He's got it.
Go ahead. He's got it.
His contract, well, let me say that that was a bargain to the district. Any other questions?
Um, on your two hundred thousand dollar legal fees that's listed in your line item, who is that going to?
Um, any lawyer that works for us.
Okay. And how many of them are there?
Probably the majority and by far the most of it is to Brian Sledge of Sledge Law Group out of Austin, Texas.
Okay.
S.L.E.G.G.E. Brian Sledge. He's been our lawyer since the beginning.
And what are they lobbying for or against?
Uh, they, that law firm, if you're asking me what they lobby for, they are water specialists. They have numerous clients. I wouldn't, I wouldn't guess at it because I don't know. Those are proprietary numbers that Brian would only know, and he wouldn't share those with me. But they represent a lot of people before the state, basically, is what they're doing. As far as, if you call it lobbying, I don't know if that's what they do. I know they are. I think he may be a registered lobbyist. I would almost bet he is, but don't hold me to that, okay? But he's an extraordinarily well-thought-of lawyer, one of the best water lawyers in, in the United States, and certainly at the top of the line here in Texas. And he presents anything that we need done for, you know, where, where we need to be before TCEQ or any other, any other organization with the state. He lives in Austin. He lives with that legislature. And he's a really top-notch lawyer.
If you, yeah, if you could just get those answers. I know there's a lot there. I'm not going to go through all of them, but.
No, I'll be happy to, Paul.
If you could just get with you and the other board members or whoever needs to be and just get those answers, and also get that, that budget that shows detail.
I'll, I'll, I'll see why. I don't know any reason why that wouldn't come here quarterly. If I can get it, I'll get it. I'll break it. Okay. And I'm sure that there's, I doubt if it's done quarterly. It's probably three months of budget.
Or, or even a yearly report. However, whatever works easiest. It just shows a basic breakdown of your budget.
Okay. Any other questions? How are you? Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing. I see that that budget is on for discussion later in the agenda. And I wasn't, I wasn't aware of it. I wasn't paying attention. I'm going to leave this meeting. When you see me leave, it doesn't mean I'm gone forever. I'm probably going to go over and get my budget to come back. Uh, or, uh, I can have Osiris here, if you'd like, on, at the next meeting in September. I won't be in town at the time of our next meeting because I'm, I'm a director of the National Water Supply Alliance. And I'm coincidentally going to have to be in California for their annual meeting. And I won't be available to come to that. But I can make Osiris or Dominic or anybody else available to have that discussion before we have to adopt your budget in October, if that would be, if that'd be helpful for y'all. Just let me know if you want somebody here, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Melissa. It's your turn.
Okay. Can I ask that each of you speak into the microphone so I can hear the, the minutes better? For the administrator comments, the House Bill fifteen twenty-two meeting notice period will go into effect September first. Our notice posting requirements will change from seventy-two hours to three business days. The items to be requested to be placed on the agenda from the public will need to be submitted to me two days prior, prior to the council meeting. So, um, for an example, this next council meeting, September sixteenth, those items would need to be submitted to me by September fifth. That's Friday at five P.M. In order for me to get it posted, September tenth. City Hall offices will be closed Friday, August twenty-second and September fifth. Now that there's two of us in the office, we do have staff, only one staff member here at that time. The door will be locked, but there will still be that availability to call on the phone if you have any issues. So, um, we will be open, but the door will be locked. I'll need you to call if you have any questions, and we can get our service tickets out or anything like that. Payments can also be placed in the door. The accounting software for the Fund View and Open Gov, we are still entering in backlog. And Open Gov has agreed to extend their on-prem services through September of twenty twenty-six, which this is an item down later on in the agenda, action item D. This agreement was agreed upon their board so that they could allow us an extension to pull more documentation that we need to pull without completely shutting us off. On water, sewer and streets, the two-inch overlay projects are complete and the brush axe project is complete. Stop signs that we have ordered are in, which I had reported on the last time, but we were still waiting on hardware to be able to install those. We have about fifty-two stop signs that we can replace right now on this budget. And those, that, that project will be starting up as soon as all of those, that hardware is turned in and we are able to get on that. And that's it for my comments.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. And on that, we have A, consider and/or approve July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting minutes. B, consider and/or approve the Marion County Chamber of Commerce special event application for the Taste of Jefferson to be held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. C, consider and/or approve the Marion County Chamber of Commerce special event application for the annual Hometown Christmas Parade to be held on November the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. D, consider and/or approve Madison Hood's resignation as city attorney to be effective July the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Consider and/or approve Kami Roster's resignation as administrative assistant to be effective August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Consider and/or approve Carson McKnight's resignation from the Police Department to be effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Consider and/or approve Gordon Bond's resignation from the Planning and Soundings Commission. H, consider and/or approve Mike Chandler's resignation from the Tourism Board. It sounds like the whole world's quitteness. Consider and/or approve Kristus EMS sign permit. J, consider, discuss, consider and/or approve the interlocutory agreement with the East Texas Council of Governments for the database maintenance for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, year in twenty twenty-six.
I have a discussion on E. Kami? I know this probably, it doesn't really happen here much, but I want to say thank you. It has been a pleasure.
I'd like to pull D out.
Okay.
Talk about that a minute.
Okay.
And I make a motion to, uh, pull B.
Okay, we're going to pull B out and D out.
Yes.
We need, do you want to do one motion with all of them that we're pulling out or different motions?
Let's, let's just do one. Okay. I mean, anybody else got one they want to pull out?
What was it? B and D?
B and D.
Any others?
No.
Oh, I pulled out E, so I guess.
E? Oh, well.
But you just did that. You weren't serious. Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve all but B Bravo, considering approved Marion County Chamber of Commerce special event application for the Taste of Jefferson to be held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-five? And D Delta, consider and/or approve Madison Hood's resignation as city attorney to be effective July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Ray made the motion April second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. So we'll go to B first.
Well, I have, I'm kind of confused over B. Uh, and looking at their, uh, event application, uh, it's, there's nothing taking place on city property, so they, they really didn't need a event, uh, street closure anyway. Uh, but then I see there, she, uh, put a, a note, a letter in there that they, they wanted to, uh, put it on because they wanted some extra security and then some, uh, uh, extra trash cans, or trash service. And my question is, when I go back and look at the, uh, the application, they're asking for five police officers for the Taste of Jefferson?
Thing must be going to be bad.
Do we have someone from the?
Chamber.
Chamber here?
I talked to, I talked to Tino about that, uh, this morning. And, uh, he, uh, don't believe he was really aware of that. Were you, Tino?
They, I think they're requesting five officers on that list. We don't see the need for five police officers to work during that time. Um, I think it's for three hours as well. But we can have, I think during that time, we'll already have two officers, uh, working. They'll just keep an eye downtown during that time. I don't see it really disrupting, uh, the Police Department if we keep it to the way it is already, uh, without five officers.
It's going to be a food fight.
You know, I mean, we're talking. There'd be some hungry people that need that many officers.
So you wouldn't have to put on anything extra.
We want to adjust anything. It, it has not had a violent history attached to it. So we don't see calling any DPS. I know. I, yeah, you're right.
Okay, with, with that being said, I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve the, uh, application.
Let's put it caveat, approve the application with the amount of officers at discretion of the chief.
Yes, with the, with the, uh, number of, of officers at the chief's discretion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Hollis made the motion to approve D, uh, B rather, with the number of officers being at the police chief's discretion. Ray seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It was unanimous. Next up, we have D.
Well, I was just curious. I mean, you know, obviously she resigned, but I mean, what do we, how are we trying to solicit?
Melissa?
Resumes, uh, what's?
Melissa and I talked to, um, someone last week, or was it this week? Probably will need to, I, I hadn't talked to her about this, and I was going to earlier. Maybe call a special meeting and see what they think about. We've got a proposal from him to see what they think about it.
We received, uh, well, you had talked to one attorney.
Yeah, yeah. I talked to one and he didn't want the job.
And then, uh, we received an, an, a resume from an attorney. And then you had talked to the other attorney. And he had a meeting with her and I, and then submitted a proposal.
So we may want to just call a special meeting to get this.
There's another one that's going to put in a resume also, a local.
Okay.
So we, are we taking applications? What are?
Well, yeah, I guess we are.
Have we, is it somewhere?
Do you want me to advertise?
Advertise, so we can see our options?
I don't, do you think we need to advertise?
I, I do.
I think we need to advertise.
I think we need to advertise and we need to put it out there.
Yeah, I, I think we need to advertise and nothing, I don't know who has turned their stuff in, but I just think we need to advertise, see, just let people know. And then we can see, you know, what we can come up with, what's best for us.
Bubba canceled that special meeting.
What?
I said cancel that special meeting. Okay. So we just need to set a time and we need to get some. I said cancel that special meeting. Okay, so we just need to set a time and we need to get somebody on board pretty quick. But.
Well, can, like for instance, if we find somebody while we're still doing these, uh, workshops, can we do it then?
Well, if, if we're gonna advertise, we're gonna have to put a time limit on it and wait till all the apps come in, applications come in.
About thirty days is usually what they, yeah, have to advertise for.
Yeah. Cause our next meeting is, what, what's the date on our next meeting?
Twenty fifth.
She's been gone.
Yeah, that's close.
Quite a while now.
That's, uh, all right, well, that's all I just want to know on, uh, I'd make a motion that we, uh, approve the resignation of Madison Hood.
I'll second.
Bubba made the motion. Hollis seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It was unanimous, cause we didn't know what else to do. Up next is our action item. A, discuss, consider, and/or approve requesting Jedco to fund up to sixty-two thousand dollars remaining on the difference in what is left in the ARPA funding for the Polk Street project, previously considered on February twenty twenty twenty-four.
Madam Mayor, I, I asked that to be put on there knowing that there was a, whenever, uh, Jedco funded it, you know, uh, they lived up to what they were gonna do, I suppose, but coming in at sixty-two thousand more, I thought we'll ask them to, uh, if they would, cause we, we can use all the money we can get, you know, so.
Yeah.
But that's what's on there. I'll make a motion, we do that.
I'll second.
Bubba made the motion. Paul seconded. Any more discussion, questions?
I hate doing it, but, yeah, okay.
At the time that the council had sought out Jedco for the funding approval, Jedco approved the five hundred and forty thousand, but we did not have the bids in for the contractors at that time. We hadn't published notice, so we didn't know what the bids were gonna come out to be. That didn't happen until August of twenty twenty-four. And, uh, the contractor expenses exceeded what the amount was from Jedco and what was remaining of the ARPA funds.
We, we did take the low bid though, right?
We took the lower of the two. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, opposed, was unanimous. B, discuss, consider, and/or approve appointment to the Tourism Board by Alderman Haggard.
Uh, I make a motion that, uh, I nominate Nicole Blakely with the Benefield House in, in that position. I'll second.
Okay. We have a nomination from Bubba for Nicole Blakely, second from Hollis. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It was unanimous. C, discuss, consider, and/or approve appointment to Planning and Zoning by Alderman Haggard.
I nominate Lamar Mask to fill position of Planning and Zoning.
Second. Bubba made the motion April second. Any discussion?
I just want to know, why's he got his hand on the door ready to run?
I was, I saw that. I was, he called me earlier today. I thought he's gonna back out.
No, I didn't know.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It was unanimous. D, discuss, consider, and/or approve amendment two to the OpenGov financials contract with the City of Jefferson to extend the agreement through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-six and to change Open, Open Gov's, I can't even say it, principal address for their place of business.
Motion approved.
Hollis made the motion.
Second.
Ray seconded. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It was unanimous. E, discuss, consider, and/or approve opening a job position for a Class C water operator, Class C wa- wastewater operator. Okay, so do we have a motion?
A motion, can we, a motion to table until after we go through the budgeting on watering?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to table this, um, from Ray. April seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It was unanimous. F, well, here's the thing. Okay.
Can I say something?
Oh, I didn't know you said.
I didn't see Alan there. He didn't, when did you sneak in?
Yeah, I would just, so.
I would just like, who put this on the agenda and who did they talk to?
I did.
Okay, so apparently you ain't, I know you hadn't come to me. You hadn't come to the city administrator, cause we're on the same page.
Melissa and I talked about this.
Right, so did she tell you that we did put one in there and we had to take it out because it wasn't? Y'all had the same paperwork I had. The water and sewer is at a two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar deficit. And you're wanting to hire a fifty thousand dollar employee?
Well, the, the thing of it is, we, we're supposed to have two operators.
And we do.
We do, but it, one is in Longview and doesn't come over here. And when you're gone, just like the last time you tried to take three days off and you had to keep coming back in here, you, you're gonna need, I mean, we need them here.
And I'm here. The guy's called me, Johnny.
I, you know.
The guy that I have, he takes care of it. I would love to have one more than anybody, but.
Okay, well, that's what we're trying to do.
Balance my budget.
We're trying to help you.
And I always have till this year. I've always tried to do the best not to raise water bills.
I know you have.
So I got the deal today, late this evening. Do you know what you're gonna have to raise a water bill to cover that two hundred and fifty-one? The council and Ms. Melissa, my boss.
The council asked you to do that before?
I guess Ms. Melissa asked me to do, get the rate study and I did. And I got it late this evening.
Well, then you can talk to her about it.
Okay, but I'm just telling you, that is astronomical.
What are, what are those rates?
So.
Increase.
To cover what your deficit is right now, just to break even, you will raise the water bill thirteen to fifteen dollars a month per customer.
Why are we, why are we that far off? Why are we in such a deficit?
Patricia, you had the same paperwork as I have. You can see. Can you not read that budget worksheet?
I sure can, but you're the one out there running it. You tell us.
Because of water meters. Y'all hadn't addressed it. Your husband was part of that, remember? The last lawsuit?
The what?
I said the last lawsuit. Wasn't your husband part of that that settled?
I don't think so.
He was. Everybody can go back and look back.
He was on council. You can blame him.
There was three people appointed. And he was one of them.
And that's, it's not, it's tabled. Thank you. You can go sit down. Next up, we have G, discuss, consider, and/or approve posting the position for a Class C.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Just.
We, we didn't, we didn't vote. We, we got two.
We didn't vote. Okay.
So.
See, that's, that's how it always goes.
Let me just say this.
Alan.
Hold on, hold on. Let me just say this. We are at a point with the next two discussions, we have to be able to work with him, talk with him because, only because you just said it, Ms. Patricia. He is the one out there working. He's out there, the one that's out there running. So I know you might not sit horses or whatever, but we just have to be able to get through this discussion so people can understand, we can understand, because we're tabling it until tomorrow and then we'll just.
Understand. He can't tell us why we're losing money other than water meters. We already know that.
Well, we're gonna have to.
Okay, you already know that.
No, we already know that. You've told us all of that.
Wait, so why'd you ask me the question?
We tabled an item. We tabled.
An item now. All in favor?
On echo, but the discussion of the budget is not on the agenda. We're gonna do that.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So we'll just hold off. Everybody just simmer down. And let's vote on echo and table.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, it carried. Next up, we have, um, discuss, consider, and/or approve posting the position for a Class C water operator and Class C wastewater operator.
So I will.
That's, that's, uh, G, golf. Uh, F is for the salary.
Yeah, that's G.
Okay, so item G, or let's, you want to do item F first?
Okay, here's the deal. We, we're just voting on E to open the job position. Now we're gonna do F to approve setting the salary.
We didn't, we voted to table. We hadn't voted.
We, we have to vote.
We have to vote on each thing.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
So we're at F now.
Looks like we need to table all three.
Yeah, but we've got to go through them one at, one at a time. That's what I'm trying to.
So we're at F now. So I make a motion to, uh, table F.
She has to read F first.
Minutes to the room.
I, I just did. Discuss, consider, and/or approve setting a salary for Class C water operator, Class C wastewater operator.
So I'll make a motion to table, um, F until tomorrow after we have our discussion with the budgets as well.
I'll second.
Paul seconded, Ray seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It was unanimous. G, discuss, consider, and/or approve posting the position for a Class C water operator, Class C wastewater operator.
Motion to table.
Second.
Ray made the motion April second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, H, discuss, consider, and/or approve designating the four-way lights at Austin Street, Polk Street, and four-way light at Lafayette Street, Polk Street to be a flashing red stoplight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we not have to talk to?
Tech dot.
Tech dot first?
We've talked to Tech dot. Those are our lights, the city's lights. Tech dot don't have anything to do with them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so.
No, wait a minute. I have a question.
Okay. Ray, just a second. Ray made the motion. Who seconded?
Paul did.
Ray seconded. Okay, now, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, um, that four-way light, uh, we own. And my understanding is it was hit by a truck. Is that why it broke the lens or?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah?
Either hit by a truck or shot.
Or shot, okay.
They missed.
Okay, and no, the idea of, I, I've had a lot of citizens tell me they really like the idea of a flashing red light over, sitting there waiting. But my question is, what's our next step if that gets hit again?
Well, we'll just get another flashing red light.
We still talking to Tech dot about a possible replacement?
No, those lights, my understanding, belong to the city. Tech dot's not gonna do anything about it.
Okay.
Period. They said whatever we want to do is fine with them. They had called me back last year sometime and said that they, we were not big enough to have those as red lights, that we could have them as stop signs there or a four-way stop.
Okay.
And so that's what we've done. And, and I've talked to them as of today, as a matter of fact.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna say, uh, since, you know, I'm, I'm down there in that area all the time, uh, with them flashing red, for the most part, it's been, it's been a lot easier getting across those streets and everything. The, the traffic flowed, uh, a lot better and everything. Now occasionally somebody comes through that probably doesn't need to have a driver's license, like the, the one that, that I saw on the way over here this evening that, uh, ran through the one that, that Polk and, uh, Austin at forty miles an hour. But you're gonna have that regardless of what you put there.
I'm okay with flashing. I mean, it's easier for me, but since the chief is there, I just have a question. I just want him to come up so he can, or his thoughts on the flashing, whatever. Rate comes, you'll have to be the one, so.
I'm getting my steps in tonight. It's good. So it has helped with congestion, having it a four-way. Of course, there is gonna be a learning curve. We are used to it running and functioning as a light, so you're gonna have a lot of individuals who miss that because any change is change. And, uh, I think we've seen a lot of benefits having it flashing the way it is. Uh, if you think about it, when you're approaching that light, you go through that first, or when you're approaching the light, you can see it in the distance, it starts to change. What are people doing? They immediately start going into the neighborhoods to avoid getting stopped by that light. Um, now people are able to approach that light, look both ways. And like has, has been mentioned, there are people who are just going through. Um, we've called a couple of people, just informed them, hey, there's a, there's a light there. Rules of the road, though, if the light is present, um, and it's not covered or anything, even if there, there is no light in it, but there is a street, you know, a traffic control device there with no lights, you are mandated to stop and treat it like a four-way stop. Um, a lot of people skip, I think there's a generational gap of that rule of the road for some reason.
So you're okay with the flash?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
What about when we have D events in a driving?
Uh, here's the thing, you can't talk from the floor. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, was unanimous. I, discuss, consider, and/or approve adopting Robert's Rules of Order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hollis made the motion. Paul seconded.
I've got.
Discussion.
I've got questions.
Okay.
Who, who's an expert on Robert's Rule?
Right.
Well.
Cause here they are.
Okay.
It's a big book. So if, oh, you know, we're gonna have a parliamentarian, cause that's what would be required. So who would act with the knowledge of Robert's Rules to be the parliamentarian?
So what, what kind of rules are we going by now?
I think it's pretty decent. I mean.
It is a very base, fine, simplified Robert's Rules.
That's all we're asking.
Well, we're already doing it, so.
It, it's not in, it has not been adopted by council, ever.
Well, I, I've been on the council for a little while now and I've seen it from where it was before to where it is now. And I don't think we are here. Now, I think this takes away from our ability to have discussion. There are still people who are very new. I mean, a lot of times, there's some days where none of us look like we know what we're doing. So I, I don't think this is where we should be.
Just put some order into.
Well, who's going to interpret and issue rulings?
Right.
On these rules?
The mayor.
No.
And you are an expert on Robert's Rules?
No, but I do know, I can read.
Then, I mean.
I, you know what? I don't care one way or the other.
Okay, all right, fair enough, but even.
Anybody else got anything to say?
Yeah, I got a, uh, a point of order is the.
We don't have that.
He's already used it.
Get, get over it, Doug. We don't have that.
That's the language in Robert's Rules of Order.
Exactly.
Is, a point of order is that, uh, it reads in here, approver adopting Robert's Rules of Order, but we were given a Robert Rules of Order simplified. Are we approving the simplified version? Are we approving the Robert Rules of Order?
This, the handout we were given is a description. It is not the simplified rule.
It's identified as simplified.
Well, I, I just look at, you know, we've done okay. I mean, you see, we do all right now. I mean, we all have a constituency and we all deserve to, you know, have our time to discuss an issue and stuff. I mean, you know, I, I was mayor, I've been on the council and, and stuff like that.
Congratulations.
Everything went fine.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor? All opposed? That's everybody. Uh, I'm sorry, abstained. Did you vote?
Uh, four.
We have one for?
Two for.
Two for. Four against. Okay, discuss, consider, and/or approve closing the public restrooms in the evenings.
Who, who will do that, Ms. Mayor?
Well, uh, maybe the police.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I knew what I ran into when I tried to close these up, you know, back in two thousand eighteen and, you know. You know, it wasn't a popular move, and then they had a flood in there, and then all of a sudden, we started, we started-
Well-
I'm not opposed to it, but is that something?
What's the reason for, what's the reason for closing them?
They're going in there and spending the night, and-
It's pretty cool in there.
We need a motion first to this, before we can discuss.
All of a sudden, now we're gonna do that? Okay, so who makes, who, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ray made the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Bubba seconded it. Discussion.
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Okay.
What, is it just these restrooms, or is it?
No.
It's all restrooms?
Already locked up here.
Well, yeah, this one is locked up.
It's down across from the courthouse.
Is it a certain time that we're going to-
Those, those bathrooms.
Lock those up if there's people, and are we gonna leave them open for particular events, like?
Mardi Gras.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, are we going to-
And then Mardi Gras has their own bathrooms back there, too. It's just like on, I mean, it could be set aside that on special events, you don't have to, I mean, whatever. But, just day-to-day, Melissa, you, you know what's going on down there, you tell them.
Um, Sherry will call me every once in a while and say that somebody has vandalized a bathroom with feces and things like that. Takes her longer to clean up, but, um, it's, it's not a daily occurrence, and it's usually happening on spring break, or, um, on the weekends when there's some major things going on. So, there have been issues down there where, you know, there's been some nasty things. So she comes down multiple times during the larger events to clean those restrooms, and Mardi Gras is one that she comes multiple times, and even the, the neighbor helps her with stocking items, um, during that time.
Would it be better if we set a time?
That's what I'm saying, like, is it a particular time, just so?
I was gonna ask the chief, uh, what is the definition of evening?
As the, the cemetery gates is set to sunset time, so whenever that is. Uh, and a lot of people will say, Carrie's here, would say, those gates sometimes forget to be unlocked during the, uh, during the day, as the officers get called around. Y'all may have already been called about that. We have since tried to handle that by changing the locks and handing out the keys to the- When they tell you, just, just, when they tell you, uh, the city, the kid, the, the key to the city, you know, and they presented it awards and stuff, well, the, the key to the city looks like this. It's a whole set of keys, and have to be ready to go at all times. Um, adding another key to my key ring is the last thing I want to do. Uh, but, uh, if that's what y'all want to move towards doing, then we'll definitely try to satisfy that. There has to be consideration for the special events that happen, um, the weekend traffic that happens. Uh, locking it up at seven PM, I do know that it's, it's regularly used up until nine or ten.
I was gonna ask you about the, the cafes and the bars and stuff, use those beyond seven?
Just, can we set like, uh, maybe, like on weekends, uh, Friday, Saturday nights, we do like nine P M?
Our tourism director wants to talk.
A couple years ago, I tried to say about getting the rest-
Colleen, can you go speak in the microphone? I'm not gonna hear any of this.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
A couple years ago, I tried to get those restrooms down. They're closed maybe about midnight because we had a vagrant charging his phone, and, uh, it got voted down to do it. But it's a really, I think, a good idea to lock those restrooms because of that. But you have people that leave, Annie Skinner's and things like that, that do use that restroom. So, my thought at that time was, let's lock them at midnight, or eleven-thirty, whatever, and then open them the next morning, and then we wouldn't have vagrants. Now, Melissa, we have lots of them, but we had a couple. And, um, that would keep the, uh, restrooms, um, from being vandalized late at night. And I tried to get this a couple years ago, and it didn't happen, but I think it's worth looking at. And then when we have big events, we leave these, uh, open later, and we could leave those open. But I mean, Sherry has to come down several times if they're, you know, so I would say if we could lock them on the weekends, especially at midnight. During the week, you could lock them at earlier if you wanted, but that, I think that would be up to the police chief, and then Sherry wouldn't have to worry so much about them the next day. Any questions?
They do, they do make a lock, uh, it's just like a key code lock that can be done from an app, and it can be set on a timer actually, where it locks and unlocks. You have certain times and dates that can be fitted on there. I, I don't know what cost, probably a couple hundred bucks, but, um, that way it takes the manpower out of it, and the forgetfulness and things like that, and it could-
Hate to lock somebody in.
That's, that's true, too.
And you can't have a camera in there.
That's true, too. But it, there, there are automatic systems out there that'll lock and unlock.
So, I mean, but you'd put post a sign that the restrooms would be locked, or will be locked automatically if you did go to that, but I think it's something to look at. We did look at it a couple years ago.
So what if, what if we amend the motion to lock at ten during the week and midnight on weekends?
Yeah. That'd be up to y'all.
And what I'd like to say, too, is, you know, let's give it a month, and if it doesn't work out, we'll rescind it. You know, I don't want to get a whole lot more work from the police.
Absolutely, there's, there's no problem with making that accommodations. There are gonna be, like I said, special events that will dictate that time, and we'll probably, when developing the sign, get something put in place to at least cover it, uh, for certain times. Um, 'cause there are some events that do run very long into the early morning. And I don't, and I don't want pu- public urination or defecation. Uh, and that's a whole nother, that's another issue.
That's what you'd run into on that.
That's, that's, yeah.
You gotta go, you gotta go.
Okay.
And what time to unlock them?
Doug has made an amended, a motion to approve this with closing the restrooms during the weekdays at ten o'clock at night, and during the week, on weekends, at twelve o'clock.
And what time to open?
And, and-
Well, people are walking through town before daylight.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They're not really closed, all that.
So, what time do y'all want to open them?
I'd say five or six, yeah.
Yeah.
Six okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just see-
We have a lot of city-
Next meeting, if it don't work, we'll rescind it.
We have a lot of city walkers early in the-
Works or not?
Well, he'll be able, he'll be able to get complaints, I imagine.
Okay, so we have the-
I'll make my second on the amended motion.
Okay, so the amended, amended motion is that we will close the public restrooms at ten o'clock. Is that what you said?
Weekday, weekday.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock on weekdays and midnight on the weekends, and open them at six o'clock each morning. Now, Bubba, uh, seconded part of one of them.
Well, his amended motion, you know, he can let us know.
Anybody got anything else to ask or say? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? It's five, four, one against. Okay, next up, we discuss, consider, and/or approve designating the chief of police or his destiny to be the local rabies control authority for the city of Jefferson.
Might as well just get a seat up here today.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Ray made the motion, April seconded it. Questions and discussions?
Well, I have a question on just how it's gonna operate. Does it go out to the county, and, you know, like, do whatever?
No, no.
Be out on one fifty-five or forty-three?
Right, when this was brought to the attention of the city, um, because of its compliance, and I, I reviewed it, reviewed the law and said, well, it'll be easy to satisfy the requirements. It will satisfy the requirement of the city. I reached out to, uh, Department of State Health Services, and they provide it today, the packet necessary. I know I provided that to Melissa. Um, we already knew, uh, very broad containment, necess- what's necessary, an officer knows. Um, so, there are standard operating procedures that have been put in place. Um, you have the duties that the, the state has put forward for that position, so y'all have those. Um, are there any questions pertaining to it? There's definitely gonna have to be equipment, uh, that's gonna have to be purchased just to protect the officers while they're dealing with it, if I'm not available.
And where would, where would training, where would training take place, or, and, and what would cost of the training be?
The rabies, and I didn't, I didn't, that's one thing I didn't print. The, uh, health and safety, and I'm sorry, hold on, let me get here. I spoke with Amanda Hunt. Uh, she's for our region, region four, five north out of Tyler. Um, she was able to present with me a, there's a four-hour training for rabies and the local rabies coordinator, and for police officers, uh, just in general. That'll be enough to satisfy the requirement of what's necessary for that element in dealing with rabies quarantine and control.
So, back to Bubba's question, in, in operational, um, are you looking at you being twenty-four-seven as a trained? Or are you looking at training multiple officers to use whatever officers on duty?
For the most part, I've already been twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, in general, uh, but, uh, definitely, I mean, we, I made it that it was worded a certain way, uh, and getting all the officers is what I plan on doing, bringing that training here locally, uh, to get the officers just, if anything, to understand what this disease is, and, uh, how to handle a situation, and if I need to come out, I can do it as well. The, uh, I did compile a generic list of equipment. Uh, that is, I'm sorry y'all didn't get that. It was, I sent it out last week, but it was put in my draft box, hate when that happens. Um, I did finally forward that to Melissa, continue that out, so y'all will be receiving that here soon. Um, it is a generic expenditures with no contracts in place yet, uh, for the quarantine sites. Um, 'cause there are special, uh, things that have to be put in place for it to be an actual quarantine site if we were to do it locally. Um, so, hopefully, we can find someone who has already been designated as a quarantine facility by the state. But that's gonna come with a contract expenditure, I'm sure. I don't know what that looks like. I have reached out to Marshall in Longview, and I am still waiting back.
Have a question for the audience. Do you know of any?
Marshall just recently got approved, and we can put you in contact with their, uh, if you call the impact, Marshall said adoption soon. Um, and they, they can, I can get you their director's direct cell phone number. Um, that would be easier, um, probably less costly than the Longview transport. I also want to say that I spoke with, uh, Chief Perez after the last meeting, and some of the things to think about, yes, they have a catchhole. For those of you that don't know what that is, that's a pole you can, you can kind of handle the dog at a distance and not get too close, 'cause they're gonna alligator roll. But they're gonna need gloves, they're gonna need a special containment cage to put that animal in, whether it's an aggressive dog or a rabid dog. And we would be happy to try to help raise funds for them to help offset that cost, because it is something that, it won't just benefit them, it'll benefit everybody that helps in the community with regards to these types of animals.
Okay, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Was unanimous. L, discuss, consider, and/or approve accepting donation of an outdoor posting bulletin board to be placed at the exterior of the visitor center building for posting public notices for city council board meetings and tourism events.
Motion to approve.
Ray made the motion. Hollis seconded. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Accept a donation of-
So this was-
Do we have any idea what this, this donation looks like, or?
Yes, it's, um, four foot by eight foot, and it's aluminum with sliding glass doors, two sliding glass doors. It'll fit right out here on the front, where the bridge is that needs to be removed. And it can either stay here, or if we get a new city hall, it can be moved to a new city hall. This is used. My husband and I found it, and we would like to donate it to the city.
Okay.
And we can install it for you, at no, no charge.
I think it's time for a vote?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Tell Bruce, thank you. M, discuss, consider, and/or approve moving the notice posting location to three oh five East Austin Street to be effective October the first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Hollis made the motion, Ray seconded. Any questions?
Do you need both? Are these, are these similar signs? Posting location?
Oh, this is so that, um, the public will know that y'all approved us moving it from the one oh two North Polk to down here. So all of our agenda postings, the, all the board commissions postings will come down here instead of down there.
Not the actual board, it's the-
No, it's, it's-
It's the location.
The location of our notices.
Okay, got it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Was unanimous. N, discuss, consider, and/or approve the cost estimate from Keith and Son Company Incorporated for installation of two seven-point-five-tonne terrain gas rooftop units for the visitor center.
I so moved.
Bubba made the motion.
I second.
April second. Are there any questions?
Have we got any, any other estimates from, from anybody else, or do we need to?
This came in Friday afternoon, and I was asked to put it on the agenda, so there was not time to get any other-
Melissa and I talked about it, and the fact that whenever they call Keith, they've got Jonathan or somebody out here right then. And with it being rented and things, you need to be able to have somebody here, day or night. And Melissa said that they had been doing a good job, and that's why I said we need to do something, and we put it on the agenda.
So they've been servicing this building for years?
Yeah. I mean, we can go out, we can contact some others if you like.
No, I, I just didn't know if you'd, uh, looked at any others with, with their history of, of, uh, serving us for as long as they have and done a good job. I'm, I'm good with it.
And because, I just want to make sure, because of the cost that is under a certain amount, then we're okay. Okay, so I'm good.
I mean, it's up to y'all. I, I mean-
I mean, I'm good.
Any other questions?
We can get better prices, we can get better prices. If not, then-
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It was unanimous. O, discuss, consider, and/or approve a cost estimate for replacing the fence at Oakwood Memorial Cemetery or posting notice to obtain bids.
Uh, I so moved.
Bubba moved.
I'll second.
Alright, then I have a question, um, on it. Bubba, maybe you can help. They look like they're two different properties when you go to describe. One is eighteen-hundred-and-fifty feet, and the other one's twenty-one-hundred feet.
I saw that, too, so I, you know, I-
Know what, what's going on. Alan, do you need to step aside?
Yeah, I saw that. Whenever it's three-hundred more feet or something like that.
Yeah, three-hundred-and-fifty, they both-
So they both know where it started and stopped, but it's just like the streets y'all approved, uh, two-inch overlay. Some people look on Google Earth and measure it, some come out and actually roll it with a wheel.
Oh, okay.
Well, did the-
It is the same start point and the stop point, though.
Well, there was a huge difference in price, I'm, I was asking. Well, do you, uh, do you feel good about this, uh, Leon Hill?
Yeah, so that's, he does probably the majority of the cyclone, or the fencing for the city in the years past.
And this is chain link, right?
Yes, it says on there. I think it's six-foot tall. I don't have mine in front of me.
Yeah, something like, yeah. Black.
So it will not be barbed wire on the top. So, it will not be barbed wire on the top. We done away with that, so it doesn't look like a prison. I don't think the...
Well, that's what I thought this price was. I thought they were gonna fix...
I'm trying to get in, everybody dying to get in.
I thought they were gonna fix the whole neighborhood in with this one, so I was like, Lord.
And it looks like it's a black chain link too, Ray.
Yes, sir, it is. So, that'll be, they'll tear it all down, they'll actually scoot a couple feet probably inside or outside to stay out of the stumps, because we did clear the fence row, but we didn't dig the stumps up. So, I mean, we're fighting, trying to keep that from growing back up.
And these funds will come out of the cemetery funds, right?
Right.
Okay.
Alan, do you have any questions? Is that fence sufficient to keep out animals? Because, you know, we had issues at a low point. So, isn't the fence sufficient to keep the animal out?
So, there's holes in it right now where people can just come and go in there, and there's no vandalism.
You're not gonna keep them out, I mean...
They want in?
Yeah.
They make wire cutters, or there's a br- battery abrasive wheels, you can get in anything.
Any other questions? All in favor?
We need, we need, well, what, wait. There's two things on that one. We either approve the cost estimate, or we post bids.
Who made the motion?
I did.
You wanna make the motion for the contractor?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we accept bid from Leon Hill Fence Company for $41,100. I'll second.
But Bubba made the motion, Hall has seconded, Bubba amended.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion items. Discuss NetMud's draft budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025. And if we're gonna have somebody come out to explain it to us, we may wanna just wait till they get here.
Oh, we under a time limit on that?
At the next meeting.
October 1st.
Did you want, didn't y'all say that you needed to have comments back before your budget meeting?
No. We like, when I said, when I said, well, if you can, get me up, get me some of the stuff in writing, anytime soon.
It says here that they won't, if possible, please try to provide comments by August 15, 2025.
I don't have that document, I'm sorry.
They missed it. Yeah, well, that's, that's of course done.
But I'm sure you can still submit comments, because they're...
Do what?
You can still submit comments or questions if you have them, like Paul did, because their schedules, meeting is for August 25th, correct?
Correct. And, you know, I wouldn't, I can't speak for the whole board again, but I don't think we're deadlining anybody to answer questions. So, if you, I didn't realize that that, I hadn't seen that document. If you can send those, you'll get much faster, quicker answers if you send it to Al Osiris Brantley, the GM of NetMud, and all alert her, we need answers on these things post haste, okay? So, NetMud, you know how to reach them.
And we can, we can get it on the agenda if you want to in September.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion to table until the September meeting? This is on discussion.
It's discussion.
Oh, show them.
Okay. Next up, Galen, you have sat through patiently. Come on up.
I heard it go wrong.
Well, you thought we were trying to wear you out. Okay, we're going to discuss cleaning out the drain ditch going through Mr. Turner's property at 804 MLK.
Yeah. Well, as you know, the city's got a right of way, a granted right of way since 1963, and it runs from underneath the railroad tracks of Frog Town all the way through my property to the river. And it was getting cleaned out three, four times a year. The rock picked back up, back on a drainage bank where the erosion was in front of my house. And like I say, the city's got a ordinance that's filed at the courthouse. But anyway, I know they hadn't got an operator to run the hole now to clean it out. And I'm asking, they've done, y'all done a lot of contract work, could they get a contractor to clean that out? That's the main thing, what I'm asking.
Alan, would you like to come up and answer questions?
Have you cleaned this out before?
So, yes, we did clean it out before.
Okay, so how many man hours are you looking at needing?
So, I have, again, I ain't talked to Mr. Galen. I know the mayor's been out there, but I do have in the street department budget to where we would do some work on his ditch, and he's worried about the ditch eroding towards his house. And we did put in a new culvert and blacktopped his driveway over the culvert and put in a lot of rocks in there, what, maybe four years ago? We spent about $16,000 doing that. So, I mean, I put roughly that in there again. We wouldn't, so the culvert's still good, we just need to put some more riff raft on the bank and hopefully straighten that ditch out. Because if, surely, I'd like to see the agreement, I've never seen it, but surely that agreement don't snake down through there the way it does. It's a straight path. It wouldn't just be so snaky. So, I mean, we need to straighten that out, so it will quit eroding.
Right in there, the main, we're getting your discretion, and that's what measures me up to your discretion.
So, the copy of the easement I was able to find, of course, I searched the deed records, but I did not spend hours in there trying to find that agreement. I was able to find here on our records, the 1990 agreement that says the City of Jefferson shall be responsible for maintaining, construction, operating, repairing, and replacing the underground surface water drain. But I wasn't able to find the 1963. I'm not saying it's not in there, I just, it might be what you have right there. I wasn't able to find it in the deed records, I didn't have enough time. So, what I provided to you today was the 1991, not the 1963.
Sounds like the city's a lot to do. What's that?
Is it a right of way, or is it easement?
They don't have that one.
This is an easement agreement.
Give the M. pass for that?
So, he don't give y'all his, y'all can pass it around, and we can get it back, because I'd like to see it. I can get a copy from Ms. Melissa, if she wants to keep it.
Yeah. If that's okay, I'll hold on to it, make copies.
And one of my big concerns is mainly in front of the house. The rock keeps washing off the bank and any erosion. If you could put in a grant or something to a permanent structure right in front of the house, so I won't be worrying about it eroding toward the house. But the rest of it, I'm not, you're concerned, is right in front of my house.
And we had talked about this previously. We contacted our grant administrators, and there were no grants out there at the time for that type of a, you know, project. And so, a lot of the times, they said that when those projects go out, it's for certain parts of the community. So, it would have to fall within the requirements of that type of the community to where that drainage would be going. And they are watch, actively watching for those types of grants for us, because they know we're looking. Because there's other parts of town that have issues, like the Frog Town area that you were talking about.
Of course, y'all are aware that west of 59 and north of Frog Town and all above goes right through my property. All of the housing conditions rain right down and come down that drain. That drain is probably six foot deep, and it'll be full and overflowing at the end on my property. Mainly, the reason for that is there's like a 30-inch culvert that used to go to the hospital. Well, it needs to be dug out and opened up, but it, it won't take care of the water, and it floods my property down there. It serves no purpose, it needs to take that culvert out also.
So, Alan, you still have money in the budget to take care of that?
No, ma'am, it's in my outside service for what we're doing this next year.
Gotcha.
That's why I added it to that, or allocated some money to put in for that.
For the next budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, like you're saying, if we wanna do away with the hospital drive-in, I think we could get with the county, they do not use, it's a gate across there, so nobody can come and go through there, and that would relieve a lot of the restrictions.
If it's a culvert, reckon they would come take it out?
Ma'am?
I said, if it's their culvert, would they come take it, the county come take it out?
I doubt it. No.
It's a concrete culvert, they're gonna bust it, dig it in there.
We could hire, we rented the equipment, you're an operator, how could...
He's actually got it.
You get him a piece of equipment, and I'll run it.
All right, thank you.
Anything, any other comments, questions? What are we planning on doing?
Well, it all depends on the budget.
So, I'd like to talk, again, let's, I'll be here tomorrow night, I am in school this week, I will be here roughly 6:30 when it starts, and I guess y'all decided to go over the street and the water and sewer tomorrow night?
And hot tacks.
Ma'am?
And hot tacks.
And hot, yes, ma'am. And then I can tell y'all what we're doing, see if that helps Mr. Turner.
Sure.
See if that'll help you get that out, we can go into more detail tomorrow, I think.
It's right by, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Okay.
I'll get that paper back, turn it to get through.
Yeah, I think Ms. Melissa wanted a copy of it.
I got it. Is it okay if I give you?
I'll just pick it up in a couple days.
Or if you wait five minutes after the meeting, I'll make a copy and get it back.
Maybe way past his bedtime.
Yes, I would think.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Discuss funding for animal control versus animal rescue for the upcoming budget. Do we understand the difference?
I have my case. Okay.
Yep, I do.
I have a small question. So, I know last, almost budget discussion, not the last budget, but before that, when Paul said that the ordinance was gonna be added to the agenda, what happened to that versus this?
It has to go to a city attorney. I thought it was gonna be on the Friday packet, and it has to be overlooked by a city attorney first, and obviously, we're in between city attorneys right now, so as soon as that happens, it'll, but it made some amendments that, like, for instance, the fine, instead of being $500, it's up to $500. That gives the police and the judge some discretion. It also gives us, there's a paragraph in there for some wording for, like FOJA for TMR programs, to be able to continue doing their work and trapping and release, you know, getting spade neutered and releasing them back. You know, we're, a lot of the wording before, or a lot of the thinking before was, we're not gonna be able to feed our, you know, feed our cages. And yes, we can, with this, if it's adopted, the amendment adopted. There's also a, towards the first, there was a health code on there that was wrong. It was a clerical, came from the law office last time, and somebody wrote down the wrong health code down there. That was, that's corrected. Also gives permission for people to feed on other people's property with written permission, and that property, said property owner. And then, the rest of it's just dots and Ts and commas in the right places. But can't do anything until it's looked at by the city attorney, whoever that might be.
I guess I'll wait till tomorrow to ask my other question. Because I don't think I can ask it right now, since it's not...
Okay.
It talks, I have a question just about, I have a question about the ordinance, but I'm not sure I can talk about it.
No, this is about the control versus rescue tonight, I think.
I know that in the...
Yes, yes, so we don't have, that's why I said I'll wait till tomorrow to ask my question, when we get into talking about stuff.
In the last, last several meetings, in the comments before the meetings, quite a few of the people speaking for FOJA have brought up the fact that we, I mean, we really need some sort of animal control, like to take care of the dog that's biting people and things like that. So, we need to look at, you know, what we can do, how we can work with him and...
All right, so let me ask a clear question, question, because I'm not quite understanding this, I don't think. Are you referring to a city-owned and run animal control versus existing FOJA? Or are you looking at?
Well, FOJA's more of a rescue.
Okay.
And basically, what we, well, what we is, is basically just something, like when the, when somebody gets bit, I don't think they even call and let Tino know. And those are things that need to be reported. And we've talked with Tino about that. I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that what we're doing with FOJA is more rescue...
I think sometimes, I think it's kinda like a, I think they may call and talk to each other, sometimes they may know, may not know. But my question is, what are we discussing, like, the versus funding, animal control versus funding animal rescue? Like, what are we, what are we talking, like, who put this on there? And what was your question?
We just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the difference, because that was what, one of the attorneys we talked to made the comment, that there's a difference between the two. And what we're required to do, and what we're not required to do.
We're required, we're required to have rabies control. That's one thing we, obviously, and we've done that, and we've touched on that. And of course, that costs money too, so that's a, that's a necessity. Not that anything else is not important, but it's a necessity by the state.
Yeah, that's why we've worked on, we're working on that part, we talked about it.
So, what you're doing here, animal control is what we just did with Chief?
That's not even animal control, that's rabies.
That's rabies control.
What we did with him, that's why I'm saying, like, what are we, what are we talking about here?
Well, what we're talking about is stray dogs or cats, and instead of the feeding Do you understand what I'm saying?
No. I understand, but I don't think it's, I just want whoever put this on here, I, we don't, well, let me not say we, because I can't speak for anybody else. I know what the difference is, but what I'm trying to ask is, why is this on here? What are you, whoever put it on there, what are you wanting to tell us or tell the public? What are we saying right here? We just need to come out and say it, instead of doing all the difference in animal control and funding it in animal rescue.
You're going to have to decide whether the city wants to do animal rescue, or whether they want to do animal control. And you, as the council, will have to decide that.
Well, the finding is for animal rescue. That's 16,000 is animal rescue, right?
Yeah.
All right, now, animal control, to me, is having a shelter, you have people that's gonna pick up all the strays. I mean, you know, it's not just what we did with Tino tonight, it's the full meal deal, you know? I mean, what do we?
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, I think, personally, I think it should've said, it should've said rabies control versus, instead of animal control, rabies control versus animal rescue, because they're talking about money, is what it's talking about.
Well, it basically comes down to money.
Right, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
I got on Dangerfield's website the other day, they've got everything on their budgets all out in there.
So, does Atlanta and London?
Atlanta didn't have a shelter, the last I talked to. That's been a while back. Now, I talked to them when I was mayor, and basically, the only one in East Texas that I was aware of had a shelter, per se, the smallest town, was Dangerfield. They had a 20 stall.
And they've had their shelter, I'm 45 years old. Am I, yeah, I'm 45. So, they've had their shelter as long as I can, you know, remember, a long time. You know, they've had their shelter.
They had two isolation cages in there, four, like you're talking about with the rabies thing, that they have to hold. But anyway, that's...
Okay, well...
Well, I think what is needed to discuss this is a description and a cost with each. What is, what is, what are, what are one gonna provide, what kind of services they're gonna provide, and at what cost, and vice versa? So, we can get a good idea of, number one, what we can afford, and number two, what does the money we're spending bringing in.
And basically, that's why we put this on here for discussion, so that it would open up just people talking about this.
This is what I wanna say. I feel like we're almost try, with this right here being put on there, it, it could've just been put on there wrong. But it's almost like we're trying to say, let's not fund them again. In, pretty much in a nutshell, because we did have discussion last week about animal control. But we're just now getting Tino to where he can get, you know, be the rabies officer and control, get, where he can be the rabies officer. We're not all the way there yet with animal control. We still have so many questions. We refuse, some of us refuse to actually try to work with them, let them e- try to help educate us. We have to come to the same table with them, whether we, some of us like it or not. We have to try to come to the same table so we can help each other. They're helping us, we're helping them. Yes, it's animal rescue. You can call it animal rescue, you can call it whatever, but it is animal control as well. It is animal rescue. It's a lot of things that they do. It's, um, literally almost injuring her, I mean, she went down in a freaking wheel. None of us gonna go down in a wheel, not any one of us. Not at our age, not, I mean, and I'm, we're not gonna do it. And we try to say we're not gonna, I mean, this is just basically what it's saying, one versus the other, and we're not there yet. We gotta be realistic. We have to talk about it, have the hard discussions so we can get there, get to a better place.
Isn't that what we were, isn't that what we were supposed to do, uh, starting in June, I mean, uh, if I can get my dates right? When the ordinance was done, wasn't there supposed to be a committee put together?
It was supposed to be discussed at this meeting, but we, although yes, the window was closed in four weeks. I mean, you can get a lot done in four weeks. They could, I mean, they can get a lot done at that time.
We had a, didn't we have a three-month deal on that?
We had a, we, we, it, we didn't hold up on our end of the bargain.
We did.
No, we didn't.
Bubba's, wait just one second.
No, hold on. He came back and said-
No, you hold on.
No, I'm not holding when I get done.
Bubba, you're the one that told me, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, but you know what the agenda was about feeding on public property?
You said, you said-
Public property, don't you start-
That's what it, that's what it says.
Plus, his wife wanted to be on there. There were several other people in town that were anti-animal, I'll say.
There sure is a lot of those.
They wanted to be on there. I was gonna have to have a committee with everybody and y'all had one without anybody but your own city.
You know what? That committee was you and me talking down there at the fire station.
I just told you that.
You said, you said, put it on the agenda, and that's what I did.
I said that, but-
I wouldn't admit to it, my sister sitting out there either.
You already had the, you already had all that ordinance written up and all, no, all that, you did.
No, no.
Well, that's what was presented to us, was that ordinance.
And yet, well, it wasn't written up till you told us to put it on the agenda. I'm not gonna sit here and argue about it.
We didn't, we didn't sit here and talk about it like we do all over, but let me tell you, the one thing that's tabled was that it was going to be only a deal for feeding on public property.
That's all it is.
Well, no, you've got one whole bunch more of that stuff than that.
Like what?
Where's that ordinance? You didn't read that ordinance?
I did, and it says on public property.
Well, this says I can't fit, I can't get somebody to come feed my strays.
I contacted you shortly after, uh, all that happened. I contacted you. I remember I was sitting in Chili's in Marshall. And when we talked that night, it was gonna be, uh, the committee was gonna be made up of, I believe, Tino, the police chief. Read, read back at the minute, hold on, hold on. The minutes, there would be, it said one to two council persons and members from FOJA. And then I offered myself to be that second if it was needed, and I was pretty much denied by you. You said, well, I don't, we don't want a walking quorum, is what you told me.
Well-
And, yeah, no, that's what you told me. That's what you told me. And, and the police chief, I'm sure, would've been happy to be there. And I also offered other people that said they would be happy to be on that, on that board, but nobody ever contacted me one time about it.
I never had one. Y'all had one or something. Who drew that up? Who drew that ordinance up?
You're the one that took over the committee. You said, you were, you said right down there.
Well, I, I, whenever I, I was talking about, wait a minute, I was talking about this and whenever it was gonna have to be a, it was gonna have to be put on the, you know, it was gonna have to be posted or it was gonna have to be minutes. And I wasn't gonna do it for just that. But when y'all had one, you could've had everybody too. Say, look here, Bubba's not gonna do it, we're gonna have one. That's all you had to do. But you come back with this agenda, you come back with that ordinance, and it was already drawn up.
His, Melissa, Melissa had it.
I did not say that.
Yes, you did.
Look, you had a month, because you, you asked council if you could have till August. So you asked council that, and between that and the next month, we talked and you told me that you couldn't get everybody together. There wasn't gonna-
I never said that.
Yes, you did.
I was actually the one that came.
I did not. I never got anybody together. They, y'all all, the different ones told me if I had it, they wanted to come.
Well, and so you never called anybody and set up a committee. Okay, well, that means you didn't set up a committee. Okay, we're moving right along.
I didn't call anybody, cause I wasn't gonna- But, I did not, I did not put anything together and then come here and-
I think we're, I think we're spinning our wheels right now. Uh, basically, uh, uh, the ordinance probably was, was, uh, uh, worded, worded wrong, something, uh, the, the big thing was to, to keep the, the feeding off of the, the city property. And the way it's worded, it, it, it come out, like, like they said that, uh, you know, uh, basically if, uh, if I'm going out of town, I, I couldn't get, uh, uh, my next door neighbor to feed my animal on my property. And, uh, so there, there's, there's some flaws in that ordinance.
Well, but we didn't think people knew that.
I, I think we need to just, uh-
That's why I'm trying to figure out if it's, if there's so many flaws with the animal control, in that whole thing, I'm not even gonna use the word.
We've gotta go to executive session, so let's wr- wrap this up.
If there's so many flaws in it, how can we say, e- e- even if the wording was wrong, it's not a law? How can we put it in, how can we put it into effect?
Please, let's go to executive session.
What are we going for? We ain't even made it past all of this yet. We still at the top.
Honey, we, we're not passing anything. That was discussed, we discussed.
There's no motions on this.
No, I'm saying-
Okay, next up, we have, uh, we're going into executive session.
We ain't even made it to this.
Five-five point, section five-five point one, five-five one point oh seven four. Deliberations concerning personnel matters, appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Police chief. Okay, so we are at seven forty-eight going into executive meeting.